Welcome. Welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting of October 9th, 2018. I'm Peter O'Tocky. I'm honored to serve as the mayor of Menlo Park this year. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'll also introduce my colleagues present tonight. All five council members are here tonight. To my right is council member Catherine Carlton. My immediate right, council member Rich Klein. To my immediate left is Vice Mayor Ray Mueller. And to my far left is council member Kirsten Keith. Over at the table, to my left and your right, is city manager Alex McIntyre. And next to Alex is Assistant City Attorney Kara Silver. And over on this side is our city clerk Judy Heron. And if you'd like to speak tonight on any of the items, there are cards out on the back table. Please fill out the card and put the item on the agenda that you'd like to speak on, and kindly give that to Judy, and she will organize that so that we can get to your comments quickly and efficiently here. So if I can ask you all to rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We first have a couple of announcements. I'll ask our city manager Alex McIntyre to introduce some new employees.
Certainly. I'm going to actually turn this over. I'm going to ask Nick Pegueros, the Assistant City Manager, to introduce one, and then have Derek Schweiger to introduce the other employee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Nick Pegueros. I'm the Assistant City Manager. I'm delighted this evening to introduce to the council and to the community Sean Reinhardt. Sean, it will serve as our interim library director. He was with the -- previous to Menlo Park. He was with the City of Hayward's as Library Services Director for 10 and 1/2 years. He has a Bachelor of Arts in English from Cal State Hayward and a Master's in Library Science from San Jose State. Sean is stepping in at a pivotal time for the library as we are beginning the transition from Susan Homer's -- following Susan Homer's retirement after 16 years. So please join me in welcoming Sean.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and Derek Schweiger, Community Services Director. It's my pleasure to introduce Adrian Lee Byrd, who's over to my left and your right. Adrian comes to us from the City of Walnut Creek after 11 years of experience there with the City of Walnut Creek. She also has experience both in the nonprofit and private sector. She has her BA in Psychology from Stanford University, so we're very thrilled to have a Stanford grad here with us. So she'll be primarily overseeing operations for community services, doing essentially what I was doing in my previous role here. So we're very excited about having her join us. She's already making an impact even just in less than a week that she's been here. So it's my pleasure bringing her. You'll see a lot more of her. More to come.
So welcome to you both, Sean and Adrian. Next announcement is regarding the Willow Road 101 interchange. As many of you know, over the last weekend, it was closed as they sort of reset the configuration of the overpass and lanes and move into the final phase. What I wanted to mention and announce to the public is that if you want to get onto 101 from any direction, you now get into the right lane. So whether you're going to go south on 101, you get in the right lane. If you're going to go north, you get in the right lane and you're going to do basically a clover leaf. And similarly, if you're coming from the other side, other direction on Willow, same thing. So there's not, if you recall during the interim period, there was this left turn on ramps. Those are gone. This is the -- and this is the final configuration for the intersection. I know there may be, you know, and I experienced it yesterday, some confusion of drivers who aren't, you know, used to, you know, they became accustomed to the recent temporary lane configuration. Please spread the word, right lane if you're going to get onto 101. The other thing I wanted to just quickly mention is on the agenda tonight, I wanted to move up one of the items, which is in regular business, item I four, which is to provide direction on the appointment of an interim city manager and establish a city council subcommittee to oversee the selection process of a permanent city manager. I will be moving that up so that it will be the second regular business agenda item after the Bellhaven Library. So again, for any of you who might be watching online and would like to come and speak to us about that topic, it will be moved up before I two and I three. And with that, I'm very honored to have with us tonight the Menlo Park students who had -- who went to Bezen, Japan this summer. And I'd like to recognize them. I've got certificates of recognition. So I'm going to come down there. I'd love to have you guys come up, and I'll pass them out to you. It was a great trip, and I believe, Clay, there's going to be some pictures going on while we're doing that. Clay, if you'd like to, I don't know if you wanted to introduce anything about the trip, but I thought it was a great time, and I -- and we'll let the students mention their comments, but I think they all had a pretty good time. Did you guys have a good trip?
Yeah.
Great. All right. And I should say, "こんばんは," good evening, in Japanese. So I'm going to come right down there and come on up. Oh, yes, Terry. Hi, Terry.
Hi, Mayor O'Tocky and City Council. I was one of the chaperones, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity. It was honestly life-changing for my family, also for my community in Bellhaven. We've told a lot of people about it, and hopefully for the next exchange, we'll get some more engagement from my side of the freeway. But also, I'd have to say, there really should be a proclamation given to Clay. This trip was -- would have been literally impossible for us parents, chaperones, without him. His calm was amazing. I'm not exactly a calm person. He managed crises like nobody's business. I don't know if he works for the Red Cross or someone, but he figured everything out. Lost passports, lost children, missing children. Didn't matter, you could have two adults and one kid, and they'd still slip through. So anyhow, this gift is from the parents, and this gift is also from the chaperones. And again, we'd like to have a shout-out to Clay.
So for those of you who aren't wondering what I'm wearing, this is a festive kimono that was given to us. If you guys remember when we had the welcoming reception by the City of Bezen, so I thought I would put that on. So let's see, all right. I'm going to, why don't you all get up and stand behind me? And Clay, when you -- so I'm going to recognize first our student ambassadors. Natalie Oslander, where -- let's see. Great. Congratulations. Joshua Bates. There he is. All right. Kai, there you are, Kai Duran. Missy Epidendio, there we go. Amory Goldberg. Hey, Amory. Diane Johnson. There we go, Diane. Maribel Stutler. There we go. All right, first of all, let me shake everything, Sam. And thank you all for going and helping to build our relationship with Bezen, Japan. And then, of course, the parent, which we call our community ambassadors, Lynn Oslander, Osnot Lowenthal, and of course, Terry Epidendio. Please, let's see if I've got these here. Okay. I thought I had these. There's Terry.
Thank you very much.
Great. Did I -- and there we go. There's yours. And Lynn, I thought I saw yours. There we go. Okay. Go, Madi, go. What's that?
Oh, yes.
Oh, that's right. That's right. And this is for Daniel, so. Okay. And so Daniel couldn't join us tonight. Hannah Simon, Brian Way, and Christopher Way also could not join us this evening, but we thank them as well. And then, as these slides are going, I thought I would talk a little bit about some of the things that we did. So first was a cruise of Henasse Harbor and the islands just off the Bezen coast. That was a lot of fun, and in fact, it included a trip to an ice cream or snow cone place as well. The visit to the Soysas factory, where we made our own dressing, and Soysas, and tried Soysas ice cream tasting, which was great. Kat had told us that, told us ahead of time, that that's a great thing. We visited local elementary and junior high schools, visited classrooms, had a calligraphy, a Japanese language lesson, and Japanese games and songs. We went to the sword museum, learned about samurai sword-making, and just the whole process of making a sword. Went to Inajima Island and Art Museum, which is a short boat ride, which is to an island which is off of Bezen. Toured a copper factory, copper refinery that has now been turned into a modern art museum. It was very interesting. The Shizutani School is the first and oldest public school in Japan. It was built in 1670. And we had a little lesson on Confucius while we were there. The Imbee Pottery Village and pottery-making. Bezen is known for its Bezenyaki pottery. It's very famous in Japan and very highly valued. They got to take a tour of the workshop in Kilm and got a chance to make their own pottery, which was then fired soon and should be arrive in January, if I understand. And then finally, they went to the Hiroshima Peace Memorial Museum, and that's a memorial to those that died in the atomic bombing of Hiroshima on August 6, 1945. And with that, so you see some of the different photos. It was a week-long trip, and again, I thank you all for going with us. They all, by the way, submitted essays as part of the process, and the Sister Cities Committee evaluated. In fact, we received 23 essays, and these students were the -- had the essays that were picked, and that enabled them to go. And I think that's it, right, Clay? Anything else? And Clay wanted to thank you for your help, not just in terms of, as Terry mentioned, all of the issues with being there and handling issues, but also before and after, and all the organizing work, and also preparing some of the small little gifts of appreciation, things like Ghirardelli chocolate, things that we took over there as part of our exchange. So with that, thank you, guys. We had a closed session. I don't have anything to report out on that. We'll now move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. We have a few speakers. Jim Lewis, with time donated by Karen Lewis, followed by Andrew Boone. And Jim, I have this, so, but I'll let you do the honors here, so.
Mayor O'Tocky and council members, my name's Jim Lewis, and I'm this year's president of the Menlo Park Historic Association. It's a pleasure to be here tonight in order to celebrate the friendship agreement between Galway, Ireland, and the City of Menlo Park. Five years ago this month, on October 17th, 2013, a friendship agreement was signed by Mayor O'Tocky and by the Galway mayor, Padraig Caneely. As a refresher, allow me to read into the record this short agreement. Whereas, the cities of Menlo Park, California, and Galway, Ireland share a historical bond from over 150 years, dating back to 1853, when two Galway men named Dennis Oliver and Daniel McGlynn, from the village of Menlo in the city of Galway, traveled to California and purchased a ranch here in Menlo Park, located near the intersection of El Camino Real and Ravenswood Avenue. Whereas, they believe it is in the best interest of both cities that a friendship agreement be advanced and signed between the City of Menlo Park and Galway City. And whereas, the friendship agreement will allow the further development of historic, heritage, educational, and economic links between these two world-class cities. Whereas, both cities affirm their commitment to the advancement of friendly relations between our local authorities, our local institutions, and between our residents, now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayors of the City of Menlo Park and of Galway, Ireland, affix our signatures on this declaration of the establishment of a friendship agreement. Much has happened since that historic day, including multiple trips by Galway mayors to the City of Menlo Park and by Menlo Park mayors to Galway, Ireland. I had time this summer to travel for the first time to Ireland. I found it a hospitable and a friendly country. In Galway, its downtown is spectacular. It has a world-class university, which ties to Stanford, which is known as their National University of Ireland in Galway, or in short, NUIG. I was even able to meet the mayor. His name is Niall McNellis. We are honored to have Mayor McNellis with us tonight on this historic occasion, and you might say, five-year birthday. You might be looking around the room to see him, but in this case, he had other commitments and was able to send us electronically a short video, which I'd now like to share with you at this time. At the conclusion of the video will be the conclusion of my remarks.
Hi, Neil McNellis here. I'm the mayor of Galway City. It gives me a huge honor to say happy birthday to both of us on our five years since we first signed our friendship and twinning agreement. Galway City is a completely different place to it was in the 16th century for trade. We were the edge of Europe then. We were the last point before America had been founded. And way back, we were the thriving economy that's changed so much, because nowadays, trade is not done through the big sailing vessels that used to come to visit us, but also, it's all done online now on technology, and it's so quickly changing so much. Great opportunities here for both of us in our twinning, and I think it's been very useful over the last five years to have a sister city like Menlo Park, and I hope the same for you guys, and that you've enjoyed your relationship with us in Galway City. Over the next 12 months, I look forward to working with everybody over there, and welcoming and giving you the big caveman fall check, 100,000 welcomes, when any of your delegation comes to visit us, just like the ones that we have received and all the former mayors have received when they've visited here in the past. So looking forward to continuing this relationship, working well with you, and seeing the opportunities that we can do for us. As Galway City enters the European Capital of Culture in 2020, where we become the number one city for culture right across Europe, it gives us again an opportunity to work a lot closer with Menlo Park and all our other sister cities that we have around the world, but especially to use the relationship and to use it for both of our benefits in the future. So again, happy birthday to both of us, and I look forward to talking to you soon. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Sounds like I ought to do a video in a week. Reciprocal congratulations. Okay. Andrew Boone is our next speaker, and followed by Jen Woolison. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor O'Tocky and City Council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and I've come to scold you once again for not taking action to raise the minimum wage at the last city council meeting. It is way beyond time to get that done, and it is really not a thing that you can say consumes so much staff time that we can't get it done. We're at the end of 2018 now, so please make that your first priority in 2019. It shouldn't be something that went on the, oh, we'll do that in the last six months of the year. Now it should be something you get done in January. I wanted to share with you my thoughts on the City Council Candidate Forum, the Menlo Together event. I, you know, I still support Cecilia Taylor. I think she was very impressive. She's been involved in the community for a long time. She comes to these meetings. I have never seen Mr. Wang in my life before that. Can't say that he's involved in the community, and it seemed like his answers to every question was like, "Technology, technology, new technology is going to solve our problems." That's exactly wrong. Technology is what got us into a lot of the problems we have. We need to use the technologies more appropriately. We have, you know, our transportation system is one perfect example. We have a way overabundance of cars. You know, Mr. Wang's not talking about that. And I'd like to say that I was very impressed with Betsy Nash, especially her emphasis on street safety. She said, I don't remember what the question was, but the answer was that we need to think about, when we're talking about streets and our transportation system, safety first. And that hasn't been, is not a driving principle in Menlo Park. It's car traffic capacity first, still. That's wrong. We need to say, every street is safe for people to use, whether they're driving, walking, biking, skating, anything. You know, why do I have to avoid streets like El Camino just because I'm not driving? It doesn't make any sense. It's not the right thing to do anymore. And I, you know, I don't know, I've, Kirsten or Drew Combs, I'm undecided. I think that both of you have very good ideas, and, you know, I've been impressed, Kirsten, always with you on transportation. You were the single council member here who boldly and clearly said in 2016, "Let's try putting bike lanes on El Camino Real." You know, that was a big step. You stuck your neck out, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I haven't heard a bad idea, you know, as mentioned by you about transportation. You're aware of the need for complete streets and making streets safe. But I do agree with Drew that the expansion of Facebook and the other big companies out at Bayfront Expressway has been way too big and with way too few conditions to mitigate the impacts that are caused. So in, you know, and one thing is just money. If you have such a huge development by such a wealthy company, there's no reason to only ask for $1 million per year. That was the development agreement in 2012, 10 million over 10 years. And there were others, some small contributions, and East Palo Alto got a payment of $1 million. But compare it to the Stanford Hospital Development Agreement, which was, I believe, June 2011, a total of $170 million of public benefits, the bulk of which, yes, were really for the hospital itself, 90 million worth of Caltrain Go-Passes. I believe that's a commitment over 50 years. Caltrain Go-Passes, expansion of the Marguerite Shuttle System. But the City of Palo Alto got $43 million payment and the, for various programs. There were strings attached to it, but there are things that benefited the city. That was only for about 2,300 employees, the Stanford Hospital, 1.3 million square feet. I looked it up today. Smaller than even the first phase of the Facebook campus. So we see our neighbors in Palo Alto simply driving a much harder bargain. They were willing to, at first, vote no. If you don't provide community benefits adequate enough, we're not going to approve the project. That should be your way of thinking, too. And it wasn't. In 2012, there was this idea, like, we have to approve this permits for Facebook to grow here, or Facebook will go somewhere else. Well, so what? I mean, what has, what have we got out of Facebook? What did I get? Nothing, almost. $1 million in your budget each year, $1 million for the City of East Palo Alto, and a whole bunch of car traffic, and rents going up because there's a high demand for housing from highly-paid employees. So what I hope you do, if you're re-elected, Kirsten and Peter, is to look at the third phase of Facebook campus, that it has to match the impacts. We're talking 50 or 100 million dollars of a development agreement. I'm not sure you can even do that because it's already been upzoned. But, and also, don't just give Facebook what they want in terms of their transportation plan. They want to build two car parking structures for 5,300 cars. Just say no. Just say only 3,000 cars. Match the request for development to the community's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And there is a extensive public benefit section as part of the Connect Menlo, including a formula, and we will see that next year. So thank you for your comments. The, let's see, Jen Woolison. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening, Council. I have three comments. The first is regarding the transportation master plan. I'm on the committee, but I'm speaking as myself. We made a motion at the last meeting, the committee, requesting that before the consultants and staff provide you with kind of where we're at in terms of the recommendations, that they come back to the committee to check in and make sure that it reflects what we've been So thank you for your comments. The, let's see, Jen Woolison. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening, council. I have three comments. The first is regarding the transportation master plan. I'm on the committee, but I'm speaking as myself. We made a motion at the last meeting, the committee, requesting that before the consultants and staff provide you with kind of where we're at in terms of the recommendations, that they come back to the committee to check in and make sure that it reflects what we've been telling them, so it doesn't go into a black box, it goes into a translucent box. And so I just want to encourage you to encourage staff and the consultant to make it a really iterative, transparent, community-engaged process. The second topic is about parking. I was super excited today to look at the Complete Streets staff report for Oak Grove and how successful it's been, and it was also really exciting that there were these parking availability maps all throughout downtown, both when on average usage and kind of worst-case usage. And both profiles show that there is parking downtown, especially if you're willing to walk a block. So I would encourage you, before pursuing the parking garage, to pursue a parking management strategy. These maps are so cool, and if real-time drivers could see that there are X number of spots available in X parking lot, then they wouldn't be so frustrated driving around and telling people that there's no parking, because the data is showing that there is parking. And thirdly, this is kind of just me as a resident, not as my usual self, but we, in my neighborhood, had that street resurfacing process happen this week. And just as a everyday resident, it's been a super frustrating experience, and I've gotten feedback from a lot of my fellow residents that the communication between the contractors who are doing the resurfacing and the neighborhood hasn't been great. We get these little rolled-up flyers that tell us what day, and then the day changes, and then you don't know that a certain street is going to be affected a block away from you, so it changes how you need to drive around your neighborhood. It would be wonderful if there was like a website that showed you what was going to happen. So I would just encourage you, when you do this street resurfacing, because I know it's an ongoing process, to encourage the contract, the contractor that you're working with to work more with residents to communicate better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. All right. I don't see any other public comment cards. Am I correct? Okay, great. I think we are, the commission report that was on here has been postponed, I believe, because the presenter couldn't make it this evening. So we will move to the consent calendar. There are eight items on the consent calendar. Is there any items that anyone would like to poll, Vice Mayor Ray Mueller?
H1, the minutes for September 11th.
H1, and it's specifically the September 11th minutes? Any other items?
I wanted to ask a poll, H8, just for a couple of questions.
Why don't you go ahead and ask the questions before, and then, and then if that's the case, then we can bundle, bundle everything but the minutes.
Actually, on the minutes, I don't have a correction. I just have a comment, too, so I can go after Kirsten.
Do we have speakers on? I didn't see it on this screen.
We do have speakers on some of the consent calendar items.
Okay. Actually, if that's the case, oh, I see, the public comments on multiple items. I think we ought to take the public comments first, and, and then, and then go with that. So on item, so let's do public comments. H1, I think it's Elise Stein, Stein? I apologize if I, yes, come on up. Thank you, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Hello, Elise Stein here.
Oh, Stein, okay.
Stein, yeah. First time with the town council, pleased to be here. I'm here to represent myself, but also to represent the Library Foundation with Monica Korman, who's sitting beside me. So I wanted to come before you to say how pleased we are that the council is going to be working on improvements to the library system as a whole. We're thinking of this as two phases, one phase for Bellhaven, another phase for the main library. We know the main library progress has been paused temporarily. We're aware of what happened with the Ariaga grant. So we're thinking of that as sort of paused temporarily, but not on hold permanently. We're looking forward to working with Bellhaven and the town council to move it all forward. And I just want to let you know we were here, say hello. Ray and I are neighbors, so we know each other. But for the rest of the council, nice to see you all. I'm a recent member of the foundation. All right, thank you. And we may say more when the library staff gets up to talk about the Bellhaven report.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Elise. Let's see. I'm going down, scrolling down to see if the next, H3 is, so I believe Andrew Boone is on H3, the investment policy.
Yes, I didn't understand in the staff report whether this was an investment policy for all of the city funds. I believe not. It's a specific fund. But in any case, I think the same comment applies, which is that there are various principles that the fund follows, like diversification of funds, and there are some other things. And I would like you to consider what are the, you know, are there some things included in those funds that we shouldn't be putting money into? For example, fossil fuels. Fossil fuel divestment is not a new concept. Many cities have done so or are in the process of figuring out how to not be investing taxpayer dollars in the extraction of fossil fuels, because that undermines policies you've adopted, the climate action plan and your general plan. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Andrew. And I will mention that, so the Finance Audit Committee reviews pretty much every year the investment policy, and I do know from those discussions, all of the investments are really highly liquid, highly safe investments, so they are not, you know, stocks or, you know, company stocks, and, and they for sure do not include any sort of, you know, carbon producer, like oil stocks or things like that. They are really treasury securities. They are short-term, highly liquid securities that are safe funds, and that's really the investment policy. And I will mention, it has been discussed on the Finance Audit Committee, and certainly encourage you to, to remind, you know, when it comes up with the Finance Audit Committee that that should be the continuing policy. So, so thank you. Hold on, trying to scroll down this screen. H5, regarding the financial feasibility of the city of Menlo Park's below-market rate inclusionary housing environment. Karen Grove, and then Andrew Boone again. Good evening, Karen.
Hello, Karen Grove. I'm a member of the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. On the Housing Commission, I'm also on the BMR Committee, and we are working on updating our fees, both our commercial impact fees and our inclusionary zoning in lieu fees. And when we were discussing our inclusionary zoning and how it applies in the Connect Menlo region, one of the things that came up is, do the fees incentivize the building of actual units or paying of fees? And right now, the fees are the more advantageous to the developer. So what we need to do is figure out the point of indifference, which is the amount of fees that a developer would have to pay for it to be awash for them, where they build or, or pay the fees. And that calculation requires a collection of a lot of data that will be collected when you do this BAE study. So I want to ask that you include the calculation of the point of indifference to the scope of work. It shouldn't be very much additional work. And if you could do that for at least one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, and perhaps also studios, that would be, you know, whatever bedrooms are in the analysis anyway, I would love for the point of indifference to be calculated for those. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and just like to say thank you for having a 15% below-market rate policy and this study. And I would just like to make sure that perhaps higher rate is studied. I know that there are 15% rates, there are 20% rates in different cities. Is there any cost or downside to a higher rate? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, I believe, and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, did I cover all of the different speaker cards on the consent calendar? So we'll come back up here. Currently, there was, let's see, Vice Mayor Mueller had polled the September 11th meeting minutes. Did you, did you just have a clarification?
Well, I had a, I wasn't at the meeting, but I did want to make a clarification of a statement in this, in these minutes. And I, so, and it looks like it's been crossed out, actually. It says McClure confirmed during his tenure, no city councilman signed a document abroad. And the clarification I wanted to provide, and I intended to share that night, is while it's true, I've never been a signatory on a document abroad, there is a story from when I was traveling in Wuhan the year I went, and what happened was, we showed up that night, and they said, "We have a signing ceremony tomorrow with 13 districts." And I said, "I can't sign a document." And there was a big bruhaha, and finally, they said, "Well, you guys don't have to sign the document." Me and Michael Brown were together, we were the, supposed to be the leaders of the delegation. Michael's a former diplomat. And they said, "Well, but we have these 13, 13 mayors coming. Will you be a witness to an agreement between Sinalcan Valley, China, and the 13 mayors?" And I said, "Well, no." And the rest of the mayors said, "Yes." And the big bruhaha again, and I said, "Well, you know, I was reading Kissinger's in China, and in Kissinger's in China, they talked about how in the Tibet Agreement, the Chinese actually just initialled the document for diplomatic reasons, meaning I've seen the document." And I said, "I will agree to do that." And so the next day, there was the signing ceremony, and there's a signatory line, which was the two parties which were the signatories, and then there will witnesses sign, and there you'll see a bunch of mayor signatures, and there you will see mine as the only two initials. So, but I wanted to provide that clarification with respect to what happened in Wuhan.
Okay. So the minutes, therefore, would be as amended here to strike out that one sentence? All right, so that's noted for the September 11th minutes. Otherwise, we have no other changes to, to the minutes. Okay. Well, hold on, let me just ask Kirsten, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of items I want. One is H5 that Karen Grove just spoke on. I don't see anything. Oh, there you are. And I do want to ask about adding that in here, and I'm not sure, I see that Lee Prince wrote this, but who is the staff person that can come up to speak to this?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. So can we add that in here, the, what our Housing Commissioner Karen Grove just mentioned, the calculation of the point of indifference for one, two, and three-bedroom units?
Sure. So there is a funding issue. We don't have a cost estimate for that amount. If you want to give us a, you know, a do-not-exceed amount, we can negotiate something with the consultant and put that in the contract.
Okay, so you're saying if we add some, how much, what would you suggest a do-not-exceed amount would be?
Maybe $5,000.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I would, I would like to do that. I don't know if we have acclimation or, yeah, if we can add that in there, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, good. And then the other question I have is about percentages, and I brought this up when I met with Nick yesterday, about, in looking at the table two on the staff report, there are no page numbers on the staff report, so I can't direct you to the page number. But I can tell you it's table two, the inclusionary housing in other cities. Some of the cities do, depending on the project size, well, I guess, on this table that we have in front of us, 20% is in Pacifico only. I don't see it going. And then I see varying, but it only goes, like in San Mateo, varies based on affordability level, but it goes from 10% to 15%. So I wanted to ask, is there a number, could we include in this study for them to look at what number of units it would take to go to 20%, for example? Because right now, all we're studying is up to 15. If we're going to do this study, I'd like to know what that number would be for 20%.
So the study is going to analyze whether 15% is financially feasible. And so what you're suggesting is that we also ask the consultant to analyze whether 20% is also financially feasible?
Yes, and where the number of units would be, like, does it take 50 units, 60, 70? I don't know what the number is. I'd like to understand what that number is to make it financially feasible to have a 20%.
Okay. Yeah, you know, that's up to the, up to the council.
Right. Would the council accept that for this study as well? Otherwise, I think we lose the opportunity to get the information.
I'll, I'll add on to it when you're finished, because I don't want to cut you off.
Thanks. So does that sound good to the council, though? Yeah, okay. And then Kat, what did you want to add on?
All right. I don't mean to complicate things, but I'm, I may. To Mr. Boone's point, 15 seems kind of arbitrary. The only development agreement I've directly been involved in was Greenheart, and we pushed really hard to raise it above 15%, and we were successful. One of the areas that I'm concerned about, BMR, what the construct of BMR was brought to us by larger regional government, that as well is just something arbitrary that was, it was laid out. We've talked a lot, I'm deeply concerned about teacher housing and what they call the missing middle. It's people just above what is considered BMR, and we have a lot of critical people who we love and want to have in our community, who are just outside that level. And I don't know if we would consider teacher, we've done it before, where we kind of sectioned out teacher, emergency worker housing, people that are at risk in our, in our community as well, but they don't necessarily fit under BMR. And has it ever been done where you have the BMR structure, but then you also maybe have another 3%, 5%, whatever, 2%, whatever the, my colleagues feel is, is fair, but to be able to carve out as well, housing for teacher, emergency workers, people that earn 120,000, which is, sounds like a lot, but in this community, it's really not, and recognizing the missing middle in some of those areas. I don't know if anyone has thoughts on that, but I'm, I'm asking to include in that a certain percentage of just above of the missing middle category? In particular, teacher and emergency workers' housing.
Okay.
Could we hear from Kara?
Hold on, yeah, Kara.
So the purpose of this particular study is really just to gather data and perform some economic feasibility analysis.
Kara, can you move the microphone a little bit closer, just?
So the purpose of the study is, is to gather data and form some economic analysis. And then what we plan to do is take that data and bring it to the Housing Commission, the Planning Commission, and the city council for input on future recommendations. And so recommendations like that will certainly be on the table. But at this point, we're really just asking for, you know, authorization to proceed with, with this particular study and gather the data.
I understand. Including in that data, I'm supporting the idea of bringing it up to 20%, but also if 2%, whatever, could be studied just above the BMR structure? Or if we could, that's, I totally accept it if that's just part of the negotiations later. I just wanted to bring that up, that it's an area that, if we're going to go there, I don't want to hear later, "Oh, we're sorry, we can't do that because it wasn't studied."
Right.
So I want to make sure that if that's covered in this as part of the study, great. If it has to be called out separately so that we might be able to do something for teachers later, that's my question.
And you're interested in some above-moderate housing, say a 2% component of above-moderate income?
Specifically for teachers, yeah.
For teachers.
Or emergency workers. Andrew?
I also just, before I go to Vice Mayor Mueller, oh, also, Catherine, did you have any other questions?
No, that's fine. I just want to clarify my question. So if we study up to 20% BMR, that's sufficient for us to address the other issues later, if, if council so chooses? Is that correct?
It is if... It is if, if you don't change the affordability levels, if, you know, we have standard affordability levels of low income and moderate income. If you want to subsidize either at a higher level or at a lower level, it won't necessarily be captured in this study.
I wouldn't say subsidize, I would say require or allow, as something that needs to be carved out. And we need to make sure that as housing is being built, we carve out something to protect our teachers. So, if that means we have to have another level, then that's what I'm suggesting, because I want to make sure that the teachers we have are protected, so that the good teachers we don't lose, because they don't have an affordable place to live.
So, let me ask another clarification question before I turn it over to Vice Mayor Mueller. But, so, the key intent also for this was also to look at it from the standpoint of smaller parcel versus larger parcel, because there's a lot of difference in the economics and the financial feasibility between a smaller parcel and a larger parcel. And so, you know, I kind of see this as, I mean, you know, 20% might work, might be possible and feasible in a larger, but not necessarily smaller. Isn't, my understanding of this is to look at different cases of, that are effectively different sizes? That was one of the driving questions that we had, to better understand that it may not be one-size-fits-all, but rather, I think we're trying to find what is, you know, feasible, but also maximizes BMR units. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is. And the current study looks at a 20-unit prototype, a 50-unit prototype, 100-unit, and a 200-unit prototype to get at that issue.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Mueller?
So, my question, it's just a request, and my colleagues will entertain it. What I'm trying to, when you're doing development like this at scale, and you get a lot of units, what's feasible is different than if you have a small number of units. And so, what I was, what I was hopeful was, is that we could split into three categories, 30 units or under, 30 units to 100, and 100 or more, as to what is market feasible. Because I believe it's going to be, I think the feasibility will be different. Because when you go above 100, you're looking at bonus level. Within that mid-tier, there may be bonus, depending upon size. And I think under 30 is going to be different. And I could be wrong, maybe the feasibility comes back different. But what I don't want to have happen is that we create a situation where if you are a small property owner, your only chance at really doing something is if you sell to a big property owner. So, we want the units now.
I have another question.
Okay, yes.
So, going back to the table, well, the table on page two of the staff report, and we have our BMR requirements, 20 or more, it's 15%. Do we need to add a category, you know, and I don't know if it's from BAE saying, you know, if it's 100 or more, 20% for them to study? Or who's going to decide what that number is of units?
So, BAE has proposed the breakdown to be 20, 50, 100, and 200. With, you know, there's been some council comment that maybe, you know, 30, and then 30 to 90, and over 90 would make more sense for this particular community, and given, given the parcels of land. And so, I think what we would do is, we would sit down with BAE and, you know, see what makes sense, what the breakdown is. But there will certainly be some discussion about, you know, what that breakdown is going to be.
Okay, and would it, when would that discussion take place, and could that come back on an informational item so that we can see what it is, it's going to be studied?
Absolutely. And I would expect it to take place in the next month or so.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, with that, if there isn't any other questions, so?
Just on H8 still.
Oh, H8? Oh, okay.
I still have an announcement on H8. And I'm not sure which staff member to direct my questions to, so maybe you can tell me out. H8 is the electric vehicle purchasing.
Got it.
It'd be Justin Murphy.
Okay, great.
But I may be able to help.
What was that?
I may be able to help as well.
Okay, terrific. And probably Justin. So, I have questions on the purchasing. Hello, Mr. Murphy, thank you. Just looking on page one, when, on the bottom, it talks about establish a goal for 50% or more of our vehicle fleet to be eco-friendly, but it doesn't say by when. I asked Nick yesterday, when, by when?
If you could just let me pull that up, I think you're, you're talking about the environmental purchasing policy?
Yes, I am. Adopted July 2014.
Okay, yeah, so, that, that's what it says in the policy, and so, we'd have to be working on that, but we're currently, the Sustainability Office of the City Manager's Office is working on updating the environmental purchasing policy. So, that's something that's in the works.
So, is that something Rebecca Lucky's working on?
Yes.
REQC?
Our what?
With our Environmental Quality Commission?
Yes.
And when, so, they're looking at putting some more milestones in here?
At some point, yes.
Okay, you don't know?
And that's not correct, yeah, that has not been established yet.
Okay, okay, well, I think, I'm glad to hear that they will be looking at it. I wanted to suggest that the policy should be sent to the EQC for review. When I talked with Nick yesterday, I had lots of questions on this, and so, I think that will be a helpful thing for them to look at, to give some guidelines about when we're trying to do that, and maybe if we're going to increase that to 70% by some other deadline. And then also, to look at the types of electric vehicles that are available for purchase now, and what is not available. Because if you go down the list on Table One, the description of the cars, I think it'll be very helpful to, for them to look at what, what is available in electric version versus not, and update that. So, I'll look forward to that. And if you could just let me know when it is that they're going to be looking at that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, those are my questions on H8.
Councilmember Carlton?
Just for the record, because of the Brown Act, we happen to be talking about the subject, so I'll let you know, just in case this comes up as something that we vote on. At one of our street parties, wonderfully put together by the chamber, I met a startup by a bunch of engineers from Tesla, who have created a motor that goes along the back of the window. And Kirsten, did you see that when they came to visit? I forget, I thought someone did. I know Rebecca Lucky came, and they let us test drive it. It goes in Ford F-150s, which suck gasoline, as we all know, and turns them into electric cars. And not only does it make them fully electric, they have a lot more power, more like a Tesla, and actually handle better. And we have contacted them, they haven't really come back in time for us to address it at this time, but it does allow us to take our fleet of F-150s for public works, for the police across the board, and make them electric, or at least hybrid vehicles. So, I was just going to let you know that's there, and it's something that I'm kind of working to bring to staff.
Okay, so, is there a motion to accept the consent calendar with amendments to the September 11th, 2018 minutes to strike the sentence? Starts McClure, and also the guidance provided on H5?
So, to be clear, I didn't, I actually didn't cause this to be stricken. I never actually spoke to Bill, but this has come to us, so I'm not sure who gave it to us, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to go ahead and have that be a motion. But this isn't as a result of what I shared with you tonight. I don't know why it's there.
And five, I don't, can you, give me an idea what we're, what we ended up, because I know we're talking about teacher housing on top of it, are you just including that in the 20?
Yeah, so, H5, I know what we, we talked about a couple of things, looking at 20% as well as 15%. The discussion about the different size tiers, which we're leaving open for a further discussion with BAE to kind of see whether or not the 30 and 90 might be better, better points based on lot sizes. And, and then, I think regarding the teacher housing, I think the point was also to look at the different income levels of units, but the actual policy would be not part of the feasibility analysis, but that would be part of what we did. But to do the analysis, looking at, at those different tiers of affordability, I guess, did I get that correct?
I'm deeply concerned about teacher housing, and want to make sure that it's something that we address.
Is that fair?
Well, the third issue would then be the calculation of the point of indifference for one, two, and three-bedroom units.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So, I want to make sure that's in there, too.
The point of indifference, thank you for reminding me. Vice Mayor Mueller, are your lights on?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for H4. I'm happy to have this read this way, but I'm not making a motion, because I've signed something abroad. I don't know why this was crossed out and provided us to that way, but there you go. So, did someone, if someone else knows the reason why this was prepared this way? I don't.
Well, if you'd like, would you like, we can always?
We could wait till Bill to come back.
I made a comment saying that it was incorrect, because you were with me when I signed something abroad in India, and Rich Klein signed something in Ireland and just said that things were signed overseas, so that's probably why it got stricken.
Okay, then, on that basis, we can go ahead and have it. I just want to make sure the record's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I signed the sister cities agreement.
Which had been previously approved. It was simply signed at that. It was previously approved by the council, but then it was simply signed there, so I'm fine. So, that would, we would strike that. Any other, I just wanted to make sure we're all good with H5?
Mr. Mayor, I can, really quickly, on, back to H5, Kara had suggested that perhaps $5,000 would be sufficient. I'd like to jump that up to about $20,000, just to have a cushion, so we don't have to come back to the council. Because I think we've permutated the analysis enough that we're going to need more money, definitely, more than $5,000.
Because we've expanded the scope.
Again, we won't expand it if we don't need it, but I'd rather just have a cushion just in case.
Fair, fair enough. All right, so, do we have a, we have a motion, correct?
So moved.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Waiting for the screen to come up.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, now, let's go to regular business. First item is the, approve the library needs assessment for the Bellhaven neighborhood, and direct staff to begin a space needs assessment for a new Bellhaven branch library. And we have Assistant Library Services Director Nick Segda will present the report. And I know, I see that we do have public comment on it, so, Nick, good evening, and please introduce your colleagues here.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, council members. My name is Nick Segda, the Assistant Director of Library Services. We're here tonight to talk to you about the Bellhaven Library Needs Assessment. With me tonight, you met Sean Reinhardt, the interim Director of Library Services. Also here are Jared Turner and Kimberly Wong from Gensler, the lead consultants who prepared the Bellhaven Library Needs Assessment, and we'll be hearing from them in just a moment. We also have Chris Noel from Nolandham Architects, sitting in the front row here. I'd like to start with a brief review of the library system improvements project so far. This project began in 2014 with an administrative and operational review of the library department. That led directly to the strategic planning process in late 2015 and into 2016, and the space needs study for the main library that was based on the strategic plan requirements. That was completed in early 2017. The focus groups, public meetings, and conversations with residents that took place throughout these processes brought to the surface a realization that the community had outgrown current library facilities. Community members in the Bellhaven neighborhood were continually asking for a branch facility that met their needs. After the results of the main space needs study were presented to the council, donor came forward, and the process for the main branch accelerated, main library accelerated, excuse me. Council heard feedback from the community and directed staff to consider improvements to the library system as a whole, both the branch and the main. They directed staff in October of 2017 to make physical improvements to the branch, approved additional open hours at the branch, and additional staff, and directed staff to begin planning for a new branch facility. The first step in that process was the library needs assessment for the neighborhood, which is now complete. I'd like to take a quick moment here to thank the members of the Bellhaven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee for all of their work since February of this year. Jackie Sebrian, the Chair, Betsy Hallaby, the Vice Chair, Tiffany Lai, Veronica Gonzalez, and Pushpinder Lubana have worked together with council members Klein and Keith. I'd also like to thank all of the neighbors and organizations who participated in the project so far. So now, we come to the results of all that hard work. Jared Turner and Kimberly Wong from Gensler are here to share the results of the study. After their presentation, I'll talk about next steps, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Now, I'll turn it over to Jared.
Good evening, and first of all, I want to say thank you for having us here to share the findings of this report. For our team, it was an extremely rewarding experience to engage with the community. I think one thing that we were surprised about and delighted to see from beginning to end was the level of engagement and excitement about the process. I think, you know, it's not very often that we can do 70 interviews on the street and have everybody say, "Yes, absolutely, I would love to talk to you." And I think the outcome of this project has been, like I said, extremely rewarding for our team. So, our goal with the, this needs assessment was to understand the needs and opportunities within the community that the library could meet. Our approach was to kind of take a broad swath and see, let's not understand just what the library can do as a library, but by understanding the context of the community and all of the needs that they're experiencing, we can kind of expand our thinking about what a library could do and achieve in the future, recognizing that there are other issues and problems that, you know, civic institution that a library might be able to tackle. As Nick stated, our project process started in November. We first kind of began this project doing interviews with stakeholders at the library and within the city of Menlo Park to understand community outreach methods and techniques that have worked in the past, recognizing that the Bellhaven neighborhood is an extremely diverse neighborhood, and a demographic that, when we restarted on the project, felt that they hadn't been heard, hadn't been understood. We wanted to make sure that within this process, we took the necessary steps to, within our best ability, conduct outreach that invited everyone who had a voice to participate. That continued into January, at which point, we finalized our approach and plan. We did three different types of activities. So, the first is, we used a platform called D-Scout to conduct external market research. And we also invested in the platform to conduct onsite interviews and intercepts, and we opened it up to the community as well to participate. However, the results of that focused mostly on the external research, which we used to benchmark. So, individuals from different communities that matched the demographics or current situation of Bellhaven were asked to participate, submit a questionnaire about their experience within their neighborhood, within a library. And for us, that was a way to better understand how different communities have faced different issues, and benchmark different services and expectations of a library with those of other communities across the country. And so, while that research was open through March, we then conducted in April, a kind of long weekend series of events, where we did intercepts, we did open office hours for people to come and chat with us, and we conducted two days of design labs, which were a co-creation and participatory exercise, where we invited residents of the community to share the challenges and opportunities they saw within their own neighborhood, as well as the hopes for the future, to understand the broader context of their experience within the Bellhaven neighborhood. After the findings from the design labs, we collected all that information and synthesized that into the final needs assessment report, during which time, we also played back our initial draft report with the Bellhaven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee, received their feedback, and incorporated that into the final report that is presented today. So, within the course of our approach, we've received over 380 different inputs of data. This is a mix of kind of quantitative and qualitative data. This is a mix of kind of quantitative and qualitative data. The experience canvassed, the young learner worksheets and comment boxes were all collected as part of the design labs, and a lot of these activities actually stayed up for a couple of weeks as we continued to receive comments. Installations were posted at the Bell Haven Branch Library and the main Menlo Park Library in addition to the active participatory exercises that we conducted that weekend. And all those artifacts can be found in the appendix of the final needs assessment report. Like I mentioned, the D-Scout market research, there were 44 completed external surveys, and these were really insightful for benchmarking purposes. They didn't necessarily inform the needs that we identified for the Bell Haven Library, but they serve as a context for some of the issues that the library might face and how similar communities have overcome those issues. And then within the local intercepts and interviews, our team canvassed within the Bell Haven neighborhood. We visited Neta Harris Community Center, Kelly Park, down to the Starbucks down at the end there. And we also conducted intercepts at the main Menlo Park Library as well to understand a little bit more of the library use case in the rest of the city. From the results of our research, there were five overall key themes, and I'll walk through each of these. And more broadly, they speak to the community's needs as a whole. They might not necessarily direct, connect directly to the library. But what we overall found was that people, again, are really passionate about their community and the services that it's providing. And I think the way we framed our questions and approach was not necessarily to lead in with discussions about a library and lead in actually with discussions in the neighborhood and then work into what the library might be able to do for them in the future. And again, we were trying to take a kind of expansive approach rather than kind of isolating the library as a use case and as it is today. So the first major finding we had was that people thought of the library and its most critical and enjoyable functions as a community space first. In addition to the design lab events, we also attended the opening open house for when there's the new operating hours at the Bell Haven Library. We also attended the Spring Fair in April and conducted additional intercepts there. And in the context of that space, people really appreciated how much the library was actually able to function as an anchor and bring people together. The social engagement, celebration, and diversity, the fact that families can come together in this space. Those were the functions and aspirations that people were really drawn to within their neighborhood. Bell Haven was often cited as a walkable community in that, you know, this space really was an opportunity for people to come together. From our findings and the needs we identified, which are all listed in the final report, a lot of what we classified as the emergent needs or the newer needs that may or not be provided within the traditional perception of the library, those needs tend to be more community oriented, focused on community engagement, civic activism, and bringing people together beyond kind of the traditional kind of books and stacks that you would expect in a library today. And our conversations with the Bell Haven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee as well, when they had conducted tours in surrounding libraries, they also saw a similar precedent for libraries that are actually functioning as a social space in addition to a traditional source for knowledge within the community. When it comes to the library programs and services, today, there's a large perception that it is a children's only library, especially with its connection to the Ravenswood School. And in talking to residents and participants, a lot of the kind of gaps in services that could be offered for adults, especially adults with children, when we had families participate in our exercises, a lot of times we would hear feedback like, it's great to have story time for my children, it's great to have these activities for children of all ages. But often, it wasn't at the top of their mind to have programs for them. Seniors were also another group that advocated for programs such as literature readings, poetry readings. And I think the events centered around multiculturalism and diversity were also recommended and identified. And then children below school age, so even though it is a school library, associated with the school library during the day, for families that have children who are not yet of school age, it was difficult to find a place in the community to take children kind of below the age of five for different activities other than the main branch, the main library in Menlo Park. Finally, then, with neighborhood services, and this, again, is the kind of expansive view conducted as part of our needs assessment. The bigger concerns within the community were access to a grocery store within the neighborhood, something that's a little bit larger and not necessarily a specialty grocery store option. Traffic alleviation along Willow Road, especially concerns about development because of the residents in Bell Haven felt they were really in Facebook's backyard rather than the other way around. There were complaints about light pollution and other elements, and just overall concern about those developments. And then location for city services. Willow Road was often cited as a cutoff point between the Bell Haven neighborhood and the rest of the city, and having access to city services on the other side of that line was something that was frequently desired. As I mentioned earlier, the tranquility and walkability of Bell Haven was cited as the reason people really enjoyed leaving there and it felt like home. And any visitors that we found from East Palo Alto or surrounding communities that came in to use the library or were otherwise in the neighborhood, cited that that was a reason that they often came. I remember one group of students, they had mentioned, you know, the Bell Haven Library was actually the only place where they could leave their bikes out front. And so they would ride their bikes, you know, from their home into the Bell Haven neighborhood just to access the library there because there's a way that they could get to it by And then in terms of neighborhood belonging and change, the Bell Haven residents mentioned they felt disconnected from the broader city of Menlo Park through services and felt that, you know, their voice may have been heard, but it wasn't acted on. Access to basic services, better education programs, the fact that the school, Ravenswood School, Ravenswood School is in a separate district was also a concern. And then in terms of the studies being conducted, the number of discrete studies that involves a lot of community participation outreach, if there was a way to integrate those studies in a way that allowed, made it easier for families to participate, fewer communication and less confusion overall about the process. And then finally, with the kind of brand perception of the library, because of its co-location with the school, there is an initial reaction that it is a school library. And that's something that in the future, the library can begin to address, whether through operating hours or marketing or other kind of larger efforts to start to shift that brand perception. Wasn't necessarily perceived as a outright negative impact necessarily, but it's limiting to what the library could perform as a, because it's thought of as a school library or a children's library. And even within the space, there are certain elements, because it does need to function as a school library during the day, that spatially contribute to that perception upon entering the library as well. So overall, those were kind of the, you know, five broad swaths. Each of these is outlined in more detail within the report. We also have more detailed information about our outreach, our methods and approach, in addition to more context for the history of the library, the programs offered, and all of the kind of results from our findings that we've collected all the way. We've also provided question sets in the back of the needs assessment as well for further review. In regards to timing opportunities within the report, in addition to outlining all the different needs that we had identified, some of which are feasible for the library today, others might be stretched for the future, we classify the different opportunities into three categories, near term, midterm, and long term. Near term opportunities are those that can be considered with current, with current physical capacity and requiring operational or service-related changes typically to, you know, in terms of staffing or the number of programs offered. Midterm starts to get into a little bit more of the physical capability of the space and how the library can better serve its residents. And then finally, the longer term is the longer term planning, investment, and larger physical capital as well. We felt that this was really an appropriate way to identify the different opportunities that we had found to better give the library a chance to meet the needs of its residents today, even though a physical library or new library might be longer down the road. And that is the conclusion, and we'll open it up.
So what are the next steps? This slide is a, an estimated timeline. If the needs assessment is approved tonight, we're recommending that a space needs study follow on as soon as possible. This arrow is not to scale, it has sort of different themes that would come on or different events, citing and schematic design in August of next year, funding, planning, an EIR, project approval, and construction. So staff are recommending that the council accept the library needs assessment for the Bell Haven neighborhood. They're recommending that council direct staff to begin a space needs assessment for a new Bell Haven branch library building, and to further that, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Nolan Tam for an amount not to exceed $75,000 to perform that space needs analysis. And with that, we're happy to take any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any clarified, clarification questions, clarifying questions? Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. I just want to say a big thank you to you, to Gensler, for all you did with the outreach, and to our library staff too, who have been really active, Nick, thank you, improving this to this point. So not clarifying question, but just a big thank you, so.
Okay, there are several public comment. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, on the process, as we go forward, if we are working with Nolan Tam, if we decide to do that tonight, is there, and a point later, as we look at design, if there's a point to design and construction, and we get to that point, there'll be a different review process for different firms in those steps? I think that was a question that came up.
Yes, absolutely. We heard from the community that they wanted us to move expeditiously.
Yes.
Nolan Tam is under contract now with the city.
Yep.
And they have a good understanding of the process so far, having performed the space needs assessment for the main branch, main library building.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carlton, I'm not sure you're, whether you're, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to ask that as well, thank you. And I've also heard that Gensler didn't connect with some stakeholder groups, and there was some concern about that. Have you identified which stakeholder groups were not contacted that should have been? And are you, do you plan to reach out? What do you plan to do about this?
So the groups that we had reached out to, we reached out to several stakeholders that were recommended to us by library staff and other members of the community over the course of the project. Our initial outreach in November was mostly targeted towards library staff and members of the city who could offer insight as we kind of crafted our approach. In the early January, we also reached out to stakeholders at the Boys and Girls Club, the Oneta Harris Community Center, and the Bell Haven Action Group. We also, we were able to interview and speak with the Bell Haven Action Group, and however, we didn't really receive a response from the Boys and Girls Club and the Oneta Harris Community Center in soliciting an interview to invite their input into the process. However, during our different tours of the neighborhood, we were able to meet with staff members onsite at the Oneta Harris Community Center and speak with library staff and frequent patrons as well. The Bell Haven Neighborhood Association, we also were able to interview at our, at the Spring Fair in April. We also conducted additional interviews in April with library commissioners, and we had the opportunity to receive input from the Bell Haven Neighborhood Advisory Committee as well.
Okay. The person that emailed us didn't identify which stakeholder groups they felt hadn't been reached, but to your knowledge, you have reached out?
To our knowledge, we have reached out. I would agree, though, that I think their input would be really valuable moving forward. I think the input from those members that we didn't, weren't able to contact for an interview would be valuable moving forward. I think from our conversations with the advisory committee, the Boys and Girls Club, those offering after-school programs, to, and I think really more of that's about co-location of programs and finding those synergies between the Oneta Harris Community Center, the library, and starting to build those conversations now. I think moving forward in terms of a space needs study, I think that's also a good opportunity to figure out how space is leveraged as well. And I would invite that conversation to happen during, throughout that process as stakeholders in this process continue to move forward.
Okay. Since you had trouble hooking up to speak with them, I assume you're talking about speaking with the children as well as the administration of the Boys and Girls Club?
We reached out primarily to administration, but during the course of the needs assessment, we actually spoke to a lot with the children who were using the library and those who were in attendance at different events that we were able to either observe or participate in. A lot of the activities we developed, which can be seen in the appendix, are actually geared towards young students and young children to gather their input and insights. And there are also activities designed for parents to do alongside their children as well.
So as you move through the next area of the study, you feel like you've more fully identified who needs to be contacted and can reach those people in the next phase, which is very critical that you get there.
If I could, yeah, if I could jump in, Jared. Working with the members of the Bell Haven Advisory Committee, they've come up with a list of groups that they think we should contact going forward, and bringing as many people into the conversation as we can is going to be a focus of the space needs study going forward.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Nick, for bringing that up. I was just about to bring it up if you didn't, that we talked about this extensively with our Bell Haven group, and Jackie's here confirming, and making sure that we know that when we go forward with this, that there'll be a lot of public input, and that Nolan Tam will be, you know, gathering a lot more public input, and that we have another list of people that can be engaged in this. So there'll be a lot more time for all that input to be gathered.
Great. All right, let's go to our public speakers who have been patiently waiting. Andrew Boone, followed by Jackie Sebrian. Andrew?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and I'm glad to see this process going forward. I hope that we can get a new library before 2022, but I understand things take time. I did appreciate from the report this strong theme about library being a community center, not just a place you go to check out books. You know, that's really clear from any library I've been to and is my experience also at the East Palo Alto Library. And I would say Bell Haven and East Palo Alto communities are similar in a lot of ways. And in East Palo Alto Library, there's always a lot of families there, and there are a lot of children there. And I don't know how a library should be designed for that, if they should have a special space, but, you know, that's something going to be very important for the Bell Haven Library. I saw in the schedule, and I was glad to see that as soon as next month, it would start studying the space needs. I guess that means how big is, should the library be, and of course, which would determine where can you build it. I would say, you know, go, go big. You have to consider that it's our one chance to build a library, and it should serve the community for a very long time in the future. It should be ready for expansion of the population, and that would be expansion of the population not only in Bell Haven but East Palo Alto. You know that East Palo Alto residents will visit the Bell Haven Library and vice versa. We're also hoping to build a bigger library, a new library in East Palo Alto, the one we have doesn't serve our population either. It's about 8,000 square feet. I saw in the report, it's just one moderate-sized room. So, you know, something like 20,000 or 30,000 square feet, I hope, could be done, and something like Mitchell Park in Palo Alto. And really consider that Palo Alto has five libraries, Mitchell Park is one out of five, so you can say that's serving about 12,000 people, 15,000 people. It's not, it's not a lot more than Bell Haven, or when you consider Bell Haven and East Palo Alto together, and Mitchell Park's 40,000 square feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Jackie? Good evening, followed by Pamela Jones.
Hi. Thank you very much for reading through all that report. So of course, I am going to vigorously encourage you to support the next stage of the Bell Haven Library. I want to reiterate everything that was in the letter that the Bell Haven, the advisory committee wrote to attach to the staff report. I agree with all of that. I want to just add and sort of reemphasize a couple of things while I fit it all into two and a half minutes. So I started on the library commission around 2010, and we were talking about a Bell Haven branch on that first agenda, when my daughter was... Bellhaven branch on that first agenda, when my daughter was in kindergarten. She started high school this year, and your most ambitious timeline has this done two years after she graduates. I, during, over the course of those eight years, our community has become increasingly isolated through development and traffic, unless, of course, because I have to plug it, you bought yourself an e-bike, and now you just bike to school and go across the bike bridge. It's awesome. So we've added more people, but you still can't take your preschooler to a storytime, as came out in the report, unless you want to navigate the traffic, and you thought to sign up online in advance, because our main library is also super impacted by use. This is the time to build the branch. We have a new high school coming, we have teens coming, and every library we visited said they don't have enough teen space, even when they built it bigger. So let's be the community that does that. We have, right now, the greatest literacy needs with the least access to services, and I would like us to not let another generation of kids be trapped by traffic you can't fix and deprived of the robust branch library that they need. And as part of that, in that short-term timeline, I am going to suggest that little free libraries in your city parks would be a nice way to increase book access in the city. So whatever you can do, the city has a responsibility for the literacy needs of its entire community, even when it doesn't run the school district. So keep that in mind as you decide the next steps for the library, and the next steps for all book access in the Bellhaven neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Pamela Jones, followed by Elise Stein.
Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park. I'm also a director on the Historical Association, and I'm not representing them this evening. I want to thank the staff, but particularly the committee, the Binlack Committee, for the work that they did and for their insight, the reach, the way they reached out to the community to make sure that we had really good information. And a couple of things that I would like to suggest, oh, and I also want to thank the Library Foundation, I mean, I think that now that we're on the track of having a library system in which we are looking at two libraries, is that we're going to go a long ways with being able to, to generate the funding from unnamed philanthropists that would love to see both libraries. But of course, I want the Bellhaven Library first. Given that we have very, very limited city land over in the Bellhaven neighborhood, I would hope that with the Space Needs Study, that they would also make little notes about where the location would be, because I, we can't afford new land, so realistically, we have to use the land that we have. I wanted to make the, these following recommendations to be a part of your motion. That is, and this comes from Attachment B. I request that your approval motion be as follows. One, finalize and approve the Gensler Report as a document assessing the needs of the Bellhaven neighborhood for a new 21st century library, with emphasis that the key stakeholder inputs be taken during the siting phase. Two, include the letter as a part of your motion. And three, direct the staff to begin a space needs study assessment for the new Bellhaven Library with input as outlined in number one, and that is referring back to the letter. And then authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Noel and Tam Architects not to exceed $75,000 for the space need assessment to the new Bellhaven Branch Library, and that this study include recommendations for possible siting. I think if we fast-forward in this way, that we would have an opportunity to take off a year, at least a year, and maybe 18 months. We won't have it before Jackie's daughter graduates, but we will have made a tremendous effort to get there. Again, thank you, and as a retired educator, I've said this before, I believe that we have to meet the, the unknown future needs that library services, that are, they're supposed to be doing to ensure that we have a well-informed and educated public, and hence the name, Public Library. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pamela. Elise Stein, New York. Your comments earlier, yes. Thank you very much. Any other public speaker cards? Cecilia Taylor.
Good evening, council. I apologize for taking a little extra time. I am definitely in support of fast-tracking the new Bellhaven Branch Library. I spoke with a resident that talked about a library back in 1994, and just thinking about the amount of consultants that the neighborhood has already experienced, the amount of reports, the Bellhaven Action Plan, the, I believe it was the Connect Menlo, and also the Visionary. These are all places that have been documented. Consultants have already been paid to talk about what the community has asked for, and I just look at the timeline on here, it's too long. So whatever we can do to fast-track it, I believe that we bring the consultant in too soon, that our community has already said what they wanted, and so some of the items that are on here have actually already been done, if we look at reports that have been done over the past five to 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. All right, bring it back up here, Councilmember Keith.
Thanks. Thank you to all of our public speakers, and again, to Gensler and our staff. We have spent, it's funny looking at that timeline and realizing we've spent, since November of last year, doing this. I do want to highlight the fact that we spent time in our group, the Binlack Group, putting together the letter that's attached, that is eager to move forward with everything. And so, I think that's important, and I want to say thanks to Chris from Nolan Tam for being here tonight, too. Having seen your amazing work in several locations now, from Half Moon Bay, most recently, what a beautiful library that is. And then also the one that we just saw when we went on our tour down to Los Gatos was gorgeous, and then also Hayward's brand-new library, which is just going to be an amazing asset for, for the city of Hayward. So it's great to have you, Sean, here as well, since you just went through that process in Hayward, and I really appreciate, you know, your valuable input that we'll be able to, to use. So I think I'm excited, we have a great team here to, to work on this, and it is time, it's time. And when I look around the Bay Area and see all the new libraries that are being built, we are falling behind, and that's just how it is. So I'm excited about this, I'm excited to move this forward. The city council direction that you've provided here on page one, you know, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve this, to move it forward, and then I know we'll have discussion, but I'm happy to make a motion, and it's been a pleasure working with you on the, on the Binlack Group.
Okay, there's a.
I'll second.
Motion, okay, and seconded, great discussion.
I just have two questions. I see that we say that, that we need Spanish programs. We also need Spanish books, not only for the Spanish speakers, but for the people that study Spanish. I raised my children speaking Spanish, and it's hard to find good children's Spanish books. I can imagine it's also very difficult to find adult-level, Spanish-level books. So I just want to make sure that it's not just the programs, that we have Spanish literature at all ages available for the readers as well. And I don't mean to tell the designers how to design, but I have seen Matt Henry's design, he even made a little schematic himself that he can show people, how things might fit together. And I don't know if it's feasible, or what's most cost-effective, but I was just going to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with most everything that's been said. I, I do want to make sure that when we look at the planning for the, the library, that we have, you know, I think we do, I think to one of the speakers said very clearly, we, we do have a pretty good understanding of what the needs are. Now, what types of libraries are there? What assets can we build in? What are examples? And we probably have a lot of that from the study with, with, you know, the, the local branch that's close by here. So I think there's a lot of data we can pull in, but you don't want to, you don't want to miss, you know, the other potentials that maybe we need to uncover. But I do think the fast-track, moving as fast as we can, taking advantage of what we have, and, and doing all those things, as, as folks have said. We also, for siting, I think we have a pretty good idea of what's available, where, where those sites are, and how people feel about them, but we can uncover all that as well. That'd be part of the process to move fast. One moment.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, I support it, too. Pretty succinct on that, but the second, though, the thing I didn't, I did want to express support from is the interim time period, I think Jackie Sebrian's suggestion of the little libraries. I actually don't know what the phrase is, what do you call them? Little free libraries? I think actually that in the interim time period, to try to get those at specific locations, both in the parks and also throughout Bellhaven, is actually a tremendous idea. I think we should, I really would like to see that done as soon as possible. I think it's a way we can go and do, and start distribution of books immediately, and it'll make a difference. So, super cool idea, thank you.
Okay, great. I'll add just a couple comments. You already started voting, and I wanted to make my comments here.
Oh, yeah. I'm willing to withdraw.
No, that's fine. Anyway, no, thank you for the, for the branch needs assessment, definitely appreciate the work. Thank you to, to the advisory, well, to the subcommittee, and also to the Neighborhood Advisory Committee on the work. Do agree about incorporating the, the comments and suggestions from their letter into this, making sure that we've got outreach as we go into it. I would love to figure out if there's any way to accelerate the site selection. I know you've got it on the chart for July of, of next year, and I think the biggest part is that the EIR begins June 2020, and draft EIR is March 2021. I understand that there's a lot of, you know, that, that there's a process involved, and it requires a fair amount of time, but I would like to encourage if there's any way to find ways to either parallel-process things, or that would be helpful, because I, I do echo and, and want to acknowledge the concerns that have been raised by Bellhaven, because I was, last time I was mayor, five years ago, was when we went through the Bellhaven visioning process, and, and at the time, there was discussion then about a library and grocery store, and then as co-chaired the Connect Menlo process, we talked about, again, the library, the grocery store, you know, traffic on many of these issues, and I understand the frustration on the part of the neighborhood at, at seeing construction, but, but of, not of the amenities that, that were being, that have been talked about. So I do, would like to encourage any way to expedite it. While the sites, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that, and definitely want, make sure you do the comprehensive outreach regarding the site. I do think a lot of the site input you will get will be around using the existing either Terminal Avenue where, you know, the Senior Center and, and the Oneta Harris Center are right there. I, I do tie with, with the fact that you emphasized community center and library, and would like to encourage you to sort of look at potentially, why, when the architects look through that, combining that with potential, I mean, there's a part of the, you know, there may be a combination with one of the existing buildings where you expand on it and, and build upon it, and, and it's an opportunity for us to, to update and renovate, you know, one of the other buildings, maybe the Senior Center or, or what have you, particularly in light it's currently used as a community center, trying to, trying to take advantage of that, of that opportunity there to, to do that. Final point and guidance I wanted to make is on funding, and I have mentioned this in, when we went through the Connect Menlo process, the last-year budget, and I'll emphasize it again, because I may or may not be on the council next year when funding comes up, but I'd like to, you know, put in, put in a strong recommendation that we consider a significant portion of hotel taxes that come out of the bayfront area, the, that that be utilized, perhaps, we had originally talked about it going into a amenities fund for Bellhaven, but it appears to me that the library is at the top of that list, and, and I think we might as well, while it's going to take a couple of years, let's save up for it by, by using that. So I'm going to make that recommendation, it's not part of the motion, but I wanted to get, get that in now. So with that, I fully support this, this motion, and shall we vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
And I see you already voted, you guys already voted, so it's fast. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, so. Okay. Now, the next item, if you recall, early in the evening, I had mentioned that I'd like to move up item I four and take that now, which is to provide direction on the appointment of an interim city manager, and establish a city council subcommittee to oversee the selection process of a permanent city manager. And City Manager Alex McIntyre and Administrative Services Director Lenka Diaz will present the report, and I know we've got a couple public comment cards, so.
So I'll go ahead and start, and I'll have Lenka fill in if that works okay for you. So the council has a staff report that lays out a couple of policy questions for the council to consider for tonight. Given my resignation and departure here at the end of the month, the council is going to be faced with replacing me, likely on a temporary basis as well as on a permanent basis, and I think you've got a couple of options ahead of you to consider how you move forward. One of the suggestions is looking at forming a council subcommittee to help expedite this process into the new year, when a new, excuse me, into the, until such a time a new council is seated, and then at that time, depending on the makeup of the council, they can either reappoint a subcommittee or just keep moving forward. I think that the process worked in the past when they brought me on board, six and a half years ago, there was a council subcommittee made up of Andy Cohen and Mayor Otaki at the time, and the council certainly uses subcommittees to get, to work through some various, you know, policy issues that are of high priority and importance, and so that you can keep things moving forward. I think backing up, though, I think one of the first questions the council has to ask is, on an interim basis, given that I will be gone by the end of the month, how are you, we going to fill the gap? And, you know, what we lay out in the report is the idea of looking at an internal appointment, you know, and there are considerations to be made for why you would or would not consider such a thing. Any of the department heads certainly knows the organization well, and that transition for a department head into the interim city manager job could be done more easily. The twist, though, or the consideration is that, given our vacancy factor at our department head level, we will probably further slow down the work that we, we would need to be doing during that interim. I think it's important for the public to know that an interim appointment could be as much as six months long, and so pulling a department head or the assistant into the number-one position will just slow down what that, that person was working on before. Looking externally, I think there are retired city managers and/or city managers in transition who might be interested in stepping into the position. What they would bring, or for the council to consider, is certainly they don't have the familiarity with the city of Menlo Park or the organization, but they would bring the experience of being a city manager, and being able to help guide the council and guide the staff through the next, up to, say, six-month period. One of the, one of the considerations for the council would be, if you hire a retired city manager, one of the issues you're going to face is because they're retired as an annuitant, there are certain restraints on what, what, how long they can work in a given fiscal year, so you would have to make sure whoever we brought on board, would he be able to qualify under that. My other suggestion is that the council should consider, if they're bringing someone in from the outside, they should also consider, if they can, find someone local who understands the Silicon Valley, this is not an easy place to do work, and the fact that you can have someone familiar with the uniqueness that makes up the Silicon Valley will make that transition easier for that manager as well. I think, I guess, in, in closing, one of the things I would suggest is whoever you bring in, one of the is whoever you bring in, one of the things that I think the community is going to need and the organization is going to need is a sense of stability and knowing that whoever you bring in is going to keep moving things forward, keep the initiatives on track, help a new council get seated, and help sort of kick off the new year. So, that's what you have ahead of you. I think the big policy question for you tonight is the appointment of a subcommittee to help you work through a lot of these questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alex. I did have a follow-up. Can you sort of outline, there's really three key tasks. There's the initial identification interview and hiring of an interim city manager. The second is the RFP, the invitation for, to bid to different executive recruiting firms that specialize in city managers and the interviewing and retention of a search firm. And then the third stage is the actual search for the replacement, for the permanent replacement, which as you, I think you just mentioned, is the longer six-month process. Can you sort of talk about, about those, what you see as the schedule
Sure.
to get those done, given we're coming up to your end, there's...
Sure. So, why don't I take the first one? I'll take the interim and I'll have Lenka talk about the search, the search firms themselves. So, the interim, to get somebody on board as an interim, like I said, if you end up going with an internal, it's a much easier expedited process. Because the theory is the council knows who among the department heads and/or the assistant could step up and become that person. That would be a fairly quick process. If you do it in an external process, you're going to want to meet these people who might come in and talk to you about why they might make a great candidate for a interim city manager for you to consider. You know, that process, we could put a candidate or two in front of you, perhaps, say, as early as next week, or, excuse me, the following week, actually, and probably pull the council together sooner to execute a contract if, indeed, you find a successful candidate and have someone on board as early, for the interim job on an external appointment, as early as, you know, the first week or two of November. And then, Lenka, you want to talk about the RFP process?
Sure. So, the executive recruiters, the timeline, once we give the go-ahead that we've selected the recruiter and we're ready to actually begin the work, it's approximately a four-month process, give or take a month, depending on the recruiter and the process that you want to go through. So, in some cases, councils will elect to have a lengthier process that involves a community meeting, a staff meeting, a process that makes sure that all of the entire community can be involved in the process. And usually, that's upfront at determining the profile of the candidate that we're seeking. If that process doesn't include those types of community meetings and outreach, it could be shortened a bit. If you choose to move forward kind of in tandem with selecting an interim manager and selecting a recruiter, there's a chance we could get the recruitment open and going prior to the holidays. If we don't get that started in the next few weeks, I think there's a chance that we'll want to give some time to get the process started and get through kind of the Thanksgiving and December holidays when often people are out enjoying family time and not looking, necessarily seeking a job.
Thank you. But presumably, the actual search, then that search for the permanent replacement would begin after the New Year because you, and would be in effect into the, particularly with the, with the input and guidance of the new council and its subcommittee, if there is a decision made for that new council to appoint a subcommittee, correct?
Correct. Yeah, if you started in January, I would say about four to five months.
Okay, great. Let's see, any other clarifying questions? Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Alex, we will miss you as our city manager. And thanks for being here for our six and almost half years, I guess. But can you just talk about the process that we went through when we hired you and the public outreach and how that...
Sure.
All the things that we did to lead up to your hiring?
Sure, it was painful. I'm kidding. No, so, the process, you know, so seven years ago, I was contacted by your executive recruiter to, you know, see if I had an interest in coming to Menlo Park. And that is how the process works. I mean, basically, the executive recruiter is hired, the term that's used in the industry is sort of, you know, shake the bushes and see what falls out. I mean, you can't do, you can run a passive recruitment and wait for people to apply, but that may not be the best way of connecting the best candidate with an organization like this. So, the recruiter does the screening and they sort of pre-qualify candidates and say, hey, here's a group of people that look really strong. Here's sort of a second group of people that may be strong, but there may be some concerns. And then here's a bunch of people who applied that maybe just don't quite fit the bill for, say, what Menlo Park was looking for in 2012. I came through the interview process and the first interviews were with the council. And those were fairly quick and efficient. And it was more of a, an exploration by the council on my background, probably how I presented myself, how I talked about myself, how I talked about my experience and whatnot. And I think you interviewed, I'm going to speculate, as many as six people, six candidates at that time. I could be wrong, but I got the sense that was the number of, say, competitors in the process. Then the second round of interviews, I think you narrowed it from six to, say, three or four, if memory serves me right. And that was a much more public process. It was a much more concerted process. I believe I had two rounds of interviews plus one-on-one interviews. And I think it was a seven or eight-hour process. And that's the part that was painful, to be clear. That's a lot, that's a lot of time to talk about yourself, even for me. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the council made the decision they made and whatnot. I will say, one of the, one of the issues that was concerning, and this is something I will advise the council to listen very, very carefully and closely to whatever recruiter you hire. And a city manager who puts themselves out into a process like this is going to be loath to expose themselves unnecessarily with regards to jeopardizing their current position. So, the process has to remain confidential. And any sign that it's not going to be confidential, you will lose candidates. Candidates will say, thank you very much, the risk is too high to put myself out there to find out that I didn't get the job. And then my current council, that was when I was working in Lake Oswego, perhaps, might have said, hey, what's going on? Why are you trying to leave us? It's a difficult process to put yourself in. And again, given the public process, it's something the council will need to weigh. I will say, my name was leaked. I was on the front page of the newspaper with my face, and that did not help my process at all. But I still finished out. And the risk I ran was, you didn't choose me. But again, I happen to be fortunate to be, and I was the only name leaked, as I recall. So, anyway, my concern for the council, for this council, for the community is if you want the best manager you can get, you're going to have to run a process that's quick, efficient, decisive. Bring the public in at the beginning, bring the staff in at the beginning. You might not want to consider, you may or may not consider using the public at the end. The risk you run of using the public at the end is the public may not choose to embrace the confidentiality of the process.
And I just wanted to highlight the fact that when we did this in 2012, we had, you were in front of a panel of multiple people, from the public, too. I mean, we had, we had a group of people who were chosen to interview you.
Correct.
From the public.
Correct.
And so, there were different rounds, so to speak.
Correct.
Of you going from group to group to group, interviewing in front of these different groups that included many people from the public. And is that what you're speaking about right now?
Yes. Well, no, I'm saying, if you choose to do that, the trade-offs, the potential trade-offs are, a candidate might say, you know what, I can't do that, I can't expose myself, so I'm going to go ahead and withdraw from the process. That might be fine. Some people might say, well, then that, they're not good enough for Menlo Park. The flipside, though, is they might be brilliant for Menlo Park and they just can't afford to run the risk of jeopardizing their existing position.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to hear about that.
Okay. And after public comment, I'll share a little bit about my experience in the, being on the subcommittee the last time and when we engaged public input and how that, because that might, might help here a little bit. But I do want to get to comment because I know folks are patiently waiting. Andrew Boone, followed by Jen Woolison.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto. And I'm also not glad, Alex, that you're leaving, but thank you for your six years of service here. And I, it's, it's actually good timing, in a sense, because it's a good idea to have, if a new council is elected, new council members are elected, to have that council do the hiring decision. And my concern was, like, how do you, how do you take public comment and use that, public input and use that in deciding who to hire? You already know and are familiar with the values of the community. We have a general plan that lays out those, you know, our goals. You know, the manager has to be familiar with those things that are prominent in the, in the general plan. I would say, for example, bicycling and walking, what I always come to talk about. Menlo Park is actually very unique in having high rates of bicycling and walking. And it's still a growing, growing rates, growing interest in safety. I have seen this change since I got involved first in 2011 and 2012. There are more people demanding better. So, it's, that makes it harder to find a city manager who has experience in a similar community. It reduces the pool of possible candidates. And I would urge you to think about, what are those things very unique about Menlo Park that, you know, I'm not so expert on or interested in that you need to have the city manager be familiar with? Is it environmental protection? I would say that. And also, housing, given, you know, many city managers have experiencing developing housing, but we have the challenge of where are we going to build this housing? We have a long way to go, but not a lot of space left for it. So, that would be another thing I would encourage you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Jen Woolison.
Good evening again. Mayor Otaki, thank you for moving this up the agenda. Alex, we wish you well on your new adventure. I did send in a comment to CCIN, and so I'm not going to repeat myself. But I appreciated Alex's experience, history, on what that felt like, kind of exposing himself, sorry, wrong choice of words, but having to publicly be out there. And I do want to, I know it's a trade-off that the community is going to have to figure out whether we want to err on public participation or confidentiality. I would strongly encourage you, given our community, to err on public participation. And I, especially in the beginning, when the stakes are low in terms of having any candidate's profile be disclosed, to definitely engage stakeholders, also like the fire district, the school districts, the staff, you know, all the stakeholders and what they want. I heard about a search for a superintendent for a school district once, where they literally sent a survey to every resident asking what they wanted in a candidate. I don't think we have to go that far, but I think we need to find a place on the spectrum of what's the right amount of public input. I do feel like we need some clarification on this whole subcommittee thing, given the three stages of the process, the interim, the recruiting of the search firm, and then the recruiting of the person. And given the election and the timing, to make sure that that subcommittee has a chance to be fresh for the larger process. So, thank you and have a good night.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Julie Shanson. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Julie Shanson, a Willow's resident. I want to echo what Jen said, both in her letter and here at the podium tonight. I think, given that there are three discrete parts of the process, that whoever's coming onto the council should have a lot of input into who eventually gets selected as the city manager. And thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Any other comments? Okay. We'll bring it up here. I don't, well, I don't see any lights yet. I'll at least relate my experience being on the subcommittee several years ago. So, I, at that time, a subcommittee was formed of council member Andy Cohen and myself. And we went through, and the interim city manager, I'm not even sure there was one. I think, I think Glenn had stayed...
Yeah, I think, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I think Glenn had retired and you guys actually hired him back.
Right. Oh, that's right. That's right. So, Glenn was in effect in that role. So, the, what the subcommittee did was really focus on that, what we're calling tonight, the second stage, which is, which is going out and, or I should say, HR was actually talking to the recruiter, getting recruiters to come in and doing the interviewing of the different search firms and making a recommendation to the full city council on a search firm and being part of that sort of final negotiation process with hiring the search firm. Once the search firm was hired by the full city council, then one of the steps that we had asked the search firm to do was to do a survey. So, this was before Survey Monkey, but it was, it was basically an online survey. And I remember that we had 140 responses from members of the community to the survey. And it had a whole series of, you know, questions about what, what are you looking for? It was a way to get input. I think, Jen, you referred to a profile, you know, what are we looking, what is, what is the city looking for in the profile for, for the next, for the next city manager? And that helped the search firm then write the marketing flyer brochure, which is the position description and what were the characteristics, before they went out. So, it had a public process. Again, the city council approved it, you know, and went out, got a chance to, to review that. And I certainly think, in this particular case, we could do a similar thing of having the search firm, if they were, you know, once they were retained, to have them, and we can, part of that, do a survey and make sure that before the search firm goes out, that's, that's with the new city council seated and potentially a new subcommittee at that point working with the, with the search firm. So, it's now out of the hands of the prior subcommittee, out of the hands of the prior city council, but in the, but it's teed up for the new city council, right? Because the new city council doesn't get seated until December 12th or something like that. And, and the thought is, I think the intent here is to make, make it so that the new city council can then, and that's when we do the subcommittee placements anyway, is when, is at that time. That's the opportunity for the new city council to pick a new subcommittee who can work, unfortunately, over the holidays with the search firm to take in that, that input. But I think the idea would be to have the search firm retained before then, to have them start that survey process so that the new city council can, hopefully by early January, have an agreement upon the profile and the search firm can actually release that and start, start marketing. The final, what my experience in terms of then, once, you know, there are, there are different resumes that come in, the search firm, and there were, there were 30, 40 resumes that came in. The search firm does an initial pass and screening of it. The subcommittee at that time had, could also be part of that. And, and then the, and I think the council as well. But again, this is still in that confidential period where, where, and, and trying to whittle that down to, I think it was six, if I remember. And, and then the, and then there was one set of interviews, but that had to be kept confidential because those, those six were, as Alex mentioned, were employed elsewhere and... as Alex mentioned, were employed elsewhere and didn't risk that. At the point it came down to final three, there was, I remember a big room that had representatives of staff, representatives of commissions, representatives of the city council, and, and I think some general, I think we appointed, we, we had a couple, yeah, chamber, we had a couple, in a, literally, what was it, a 40-person interview. I mean, imagine being in the hot seat of that, right? But, but I do remember that as a way of making sure we were getting public input, it represented it, and wasn't just, just the six council members at that time. Of course, this would be in, you know, in next spring, and it would be, of course, the new council. And so, and, and I actually did think, as painful as it was for you, I, I think it was very useful for the council to have the input of, of that group. So, again, that will be up to the next council to decide how they'd like to shape that, craft that, you know, put that together. But I think the idea of what we're trying to do tonight is to figure out a way, we at least, I, I do think it's important for us to get an interim city manager on board immediately, and I think, and, and the subcommittee that, if we decide on a subcommittee tonight, I'm not even sure the subcommittee is that relevant to the interim city manager, because it still will be the, the full city council that, that does the interviews, and, and, but the subcommittee may help in terms of the, the contract, but again, this is the short, this is a, a short interim, six-month period. I think it is important for the stability of the organization to, to get a interim city manager in place by early November, if we, if we can, just for the stability and management of the organization. And then the, the idea would be for the, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, Alex, that, that the subcommittee would help in the process of interviewing and hiring the search firm. But again, it is the city council that does the actual hiring, although I think the subcommittee helps, helps, essentially would guide you, Lenka, in terms of recommending one, and also in terms of bringing an agreement to the full, full council. The, and I think the idea there was to try and hire that, hire that executive recruiter before the end of November, so that, again, they could start the survey and then work with the new council, when the new council's seated, to then go out with the, sorry, I apologize, I'm running on, but I'm trying to be as specific about, about literally the, the timings, so that we've teed it up for the new, new council to, to be able to essentially rewrite whatever that is, take that, the input from the survey, and, and, but that the new council would be in a position after the holidays to actually get, get the search going. I think that's the balance that I think we're trying to, to achieve here. So, so that's my two cents in. Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, I think, I won't add much more, because you've covered it in detail. The, I think there are a couple of areas that need to be, you know, scrutinized, which is, you know, there has been commentary that there's always staff turnover, not like this. That's patently false. I mean, it's just talk and, talk and talk. It's wrong. And I'll show you the data. We have leaders of major departments that, that are gone, and it's a stretched staff across the board. In the past, we had, we had a leadership team that was full, and we were allowed to have somebody easily go into an interim position without having to backfill heavily, because we had other professionals involved that were on that leadership team. We don't have the luxury of that right now, and we need to be very mindful of this process, because that interim person, the luxury of having an internal person that could easily slide in without backfill, we might be able to do that if we get some staff, but, you know, hired up. We, we do have the two sides are confronting each other, a loaded docket, and some critical holes that need to be filled, so it's not, this isn't going to be as easy as it might have been in the past. So we need to take care to make the right decisions.
Councilmember Keith.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I agree. I think that with the unemployment rate as low as it is right now, and we know that, well, there was a farewell for the city manager of East Palo Alto tonight, that we were all invited to, but couldn't go because we were here. He's gone, half moon bay, San Mateo, the city of San Mateo just hired their new city manager, who happened to be one of our former staff members, Drew. So congratulations to him. Very young city manager for the city of San Mateo. And so we can look at that and see that it's going to be an interesting time to hire. It's not the same as when we hired you, Alex, in 2012. It's a very different time. And I do, I agree, I think there needs to be some public process, and I, boy, we had a lot of public process last time, and I'm looking at Fran, who was also part of that interviewing panel that we did, and I thought it was a good process, and it was good for the time. And I think you're right, Peter, that the next council can decide what parameters they want to put around the hiring of the new, the new city manager. But I do agree that we need to have somebody in quickly, an interim city manager rather quickly. So if you're out there listening, please apply. We need, we need to fill that to keep things working and moving here, because we do have so many shortages right now. But I'm confident we'll find somebody, and I'm, you know, confident things will continue and, you know, everything will work out.
So if there, so I think the question here is...
Need a recommendation on, on something?
Yes, whether or not a subcommittee?
I think a subcommittee would be good, to start one now, and, and recognize the sensitivity of a new council coming on board. And I think that respecting that, as Peter kind of detailed, getting the pieces in place so when the new council comes on board, there isn't a gap of time lost. But there also isn't a decision process usurped, right? Those two balanced, so a subcommittee to get things lined up, to, to do a lot of the backwork that gets there, and then the new council can decide whether to retain, if that council, if the subcommittee's the same or not. I think that's, that's something we should do tonight, and we should pick two members on this council. You know, I, I do think there's value in Peter being one of the council, one of the subcommittee members, even though you're in the middle of a lot. But I think the experience will come into play. And I think that having another person, perhaps Ray would be fitting, because he's, he's in line, he's at the, at the vice mayor position, would be fitting to have that. So the transition would be there with one subcommittee member, so that's, that's my recommendation.
I'd be happy to serve with Peter. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton.
I support that suggestion, and pretty much everything that's been said. The only thing I'd like to add is really a note to staff. My inclination is to bring in an interim management manager from outside of the organization, simply because we're just lacking so much staff. I'm worried about us not achieving the goals that we've set, or at least getting even further behind by moving someone into that role. But I don't want that to be interpreted as a lack of faith that any of you are capable of doing that role, if you know what I mean. That it's no sense of lack of respect for, for any of the staff or their capabilities, because we have a great deal of respect for you. Really, it's out of respect that I feel comfortable bringing someone in from outside, so that you can all get done what you've got on your plate at this point in time.
Thank you for that. I, I want to just make a quick comment with regard to the timeline in an external interim. I think I heard you mention, Mayor Otaki, that you'd like to have ideally someone on beginning of November, just to remember that there is a background process. So there'll be obviously the negotiation process with the contract after you've selected somebody, and there's typically about a two-week timeframe for that additional background process before someone starts.
So if we try and do interviews the week of, what, October 22nd, potentially, I know we got a council meeting on the 23rd, if we can accomplish that, and I'm mentioning that, so if anybody's interested, that they get their, get their interest in, then it would take a week. So we're talking about probably the end of October, early November, but it could be longer, depending on, on either the interview process or the background check process. Is that what you're saying? Okay. Fair enough. I, I will say, I will, I will, given that I did go through this six and a half years ago, I will be happy to, to serve on the subcommittee, but I do want to make it clear that this subcommittee terminates on December 11th, which is, I was just looking at, that is the night that the new council gets seated, and it is up to the new council whether they'd like to have a subcommittee or not, and if so. Okay? So I want to make that very clear, that this is a, in effect, an ad hoc subcommittee until the new council's seated. Yeah, I do, and I'd like to make that as part of the, add that as part of the motion. So is there a motion to, to, we've provided direction, but...
I'll move on the motion for the subcommittee and add in the, the ad hoc deadline.
December 11th, sunset.
I'll second it.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lenka. And of course, thank you, Alex. We will be, I'm sure, thank you a lot the next couple of weeks. Anyway, all right. Now, we'll move back to item, what was originally item, I2, approve the terms of a supplemental agreement between the city Menlo Park and the American Federation of County, State, and Municipal Employees, known as AFSMI, Local 829, expiring June 30th, 2021. Administrative Services Director Lenka Diaz will present the report, and then we will take public comment. So, Lenka.
Okay. Thank you. I've created the presentation to address both this item and the following item, as they are very, very similar. So if it's okay, I wanted to go through the presentation to address both items, and then, of course, can come back to it if needed on the next item on the agenda.
Good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, just for some background here, we are talking about our two non-sworn employee groups. AFSMI represents about 37 of our non-sworn supervisory staff throughout the city. SEIU represents about 163, also non-sworn staff throughout the city. Those are mostly our frontline staff, like our childcare teachers, our maintenance workers, our building inspectors, engineers, planners, and others throughout the city. So when we came to agreement with them back in September of 2017, there was one outstanding issue that we agreed to continue to meet on, and that was the concern of family leave coverage. Currently in place, we have a long-term disability plan that starts at day 45, once you've left. And there was experience by both AFSMI and SEIU members of either being on or recently have come back, or preparing for maternity leave especially. And so when employees go on maternity leave, they have to use their own leave, those first 44 calendar days that they are off. And so they were looking for a way to bridge that gap and ensure continued salary while they were on maternity leave and wanting to be off to bond with baby. So we formed a labor management committee. Members of AFSMI, SEIU, and city management met several times to see how to address the concern. Right away, we settled on a disability insurance coverage plan that would cover time between the time they go off and that 45th day. So after meeting several times in August and September, we did come to agreement, and the membership did ratify those agreements. The plan that was settled on was the California State Disability Insurance Program, and we agreed to implement it as soon as possible, which would be January 1 of 2019, or shortly thereafter. This plan requires that employees pay up to 1% of their salary in order to receive disability coverage. And disability coverage under the state plan starts at day one for family leave, and it starts at day eight for any kind of other short-term disability an employee may experience. So we, the other terms of the agreement, in order to implement the state disability plan, is that the city would offer a 1% salary increase to cover those increased costs. We also were able to extend the MOU up to another year, June 30th, 2021. In that final year of the contract that we are proposing to add, there would be a salary increase in July of 2020, and that would be based on the Bay Area CPI. And that would be a minimum of a 2% increase and maximum of 4%, regardless of if the CPI were to be above 4%. And then in January of 2021, another CPI-based increase, and that would be for the city contribution to health benefits. Again, a minimum of 2% and no more than 4%. And this would be the only item unique to AFSMI. We would also fully implement a compensatory time cash-out program. This is something we've come to agreement with most of our bargaining units, where rather than accruing the liability of earning compensatory time and cashing it out when employees separate, they would be cashing it out at the end of each year. AFSMI currently has a compensatory time cash-out program, but this would bring it into the same type of program that the other bargaining units have, our Sergeants Association and So the terms for SEIU are exactly the same, with the exception of that full implementation of the program, because they already have the full implementation of the comp-time cash-out program. So the estimated costs for this additional supplemental agreement for AFSMI, we show the additional salary costs in the current year and the two years that the MOU would cover, for both the 1% salary increase to cover the state disability program costs and the CPI-based salary increase in the extra final year of the contract. It also gives you the health benefit cost for that, adding that extra year of the contract. And then the savings we would have by changing disability insurance plans. By implementing the state disability program, which covers up to six months, we would be able to replace our current disability insurance program that kicks in at day 45, to kick in at the six-month mark. So by changing providers, going out and getting more of a competitive price for disability insurance, and being able to lengthen the time that that insurance program would kick in, realizes the savings you see there.
Lenka, if I could just interrupt you on this particular slide. Make sure I understand it. So the salary 1% is to help the state SDI help pay for that, but there is a savings that you have in the bottom row, because, because now, instead of having our disability, our long-term disability program start from 45 days, it actually can start now at 180 our long-term disability program start from 45 days, it actually can start now at 180 days, so there will be lower cost, and that's the savings there. So in effect, that is related, sort of in many ways, to that one, that reduces that 1% salary, because they're related to the, moving to the Cal SDI, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Whereas the CPI-based 2 to 4% and health benefit CPI-based 2 to 4% is related to the, to the additional, to the, to extending the existing contract out an additional year, and that's why it's only in the 20 to 21 column.
That's correct.
Okay. Just make sure, that's what I remember.
Yes, that's exactly correct. And just a couple of notes on that. One is by extending the contract year, we're deferring the costs of negotiating the contract, which we estimate about $30,000 in staff time and legal costs, so that cost gets deferred out. And then the salary figures you see here are not just the base salary figure, but also include the contribution city makes to health benefits and the pension costs associated with the salary. Again, SEIU has the same terms in terms of the costs, and so that 1% salary for this unit is offset by that savings on the last line in the disability insurance savings. And then with the extension of the one-year contract, you have the CPI-based salary increase and increase to health benefit contribution. So what we're asking is that you approve the terms of the supplemental agreement, both with AFSMI on this item, and then the next item would address SEIU. Happy to answer any questions?
Great, thank you, Lenka. Do we have any clarifying questions? And then let me, I'm shifting my screen to see if we have any public speakers on the topic. Okay. All right. Councilmember Carlton, I think you, you're on the screen. Did you have a... Okay. Councilmember Klein.
Hi, thank you. I was still going to move approval, and I think you said you wanted AFSMI first. You wanted both of them, or AFSMI first, and then SEIU second? How, I thought you, Lenka, did you mention in order?
Okay, yes, we'll do them in order. So AFSMI first, and then SEIU as a separate vote.
I'll motion approval of AFSMI and contract, and then I'll get back to you on SEIU after that.
Is there a second to the motion? I will second the motion. Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Lenka, for all your hard work on this. And I know this went over many, many months. And I think that you've, you and Charles Sakai, you know, worked well together and came up with a great contract, so thank you.
Okay. And I'll simply add again, also, thank you. I think I had my clarifying questions. This is a supplemental agreement, which both extends for an additional year, and I think, and because it's CPI-based, I think I'm comfortable with that. And also, I like the ability of the, the disability being able to provide that, but also it'll, we'll experience some savings in doing that at the same time. I think that's a win-win for both the city and, and the employees. So with that, I will, I'll vote, support this. Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have I three, which is for SEIU.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the SEIU terms of the supplemental agreement and as written.
Great. Is there a second? All right, I will, oh, Kirsten, did you second it, or?
I did.
Okay, great. Councilmember Keith has seconded. Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Lenka. Thank you, everyone. Okay. I think we've gone through our regular agenda items. I don't think there's a city manager's report this evening. Well, there was, it was, yes, yes. Yes, we did have a, okay. Councilmember reports. Any councilmember, Councilmember Carlton?
Yes, I went to the League of Cities, California League of Cities Conference, and sat as the vice chair of the Environmental Committee, and we passed a resolution very similar to what we passed in our own city, but basically allowing, right now, we, as a city, can ban rodenticides and Roundup and things like that on city property, but we're not allowed to ban its use within our city by state law. And we passed a resolution encouraging the state legislators to provide local control and to give that decision to the individual cities, and also to do further study into the impact of that. So that passed. And then I was very honored, I've sat on the LGBTO caucus for five, six years, however long I've been involved, and was very honored that I was voted as president of the LGBTO caucus for the California League of Cities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So as president, I will go next month to the leadership meeting that they have.
Let's see. I'm not sure who.
Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Mueller?
I just wanted to thank Maritaki for giving me the opportunity to attend the Global Climate Action Summit, and his stead was inspiring today. I know Menlo Park was meeting at the Hewlett Foundation with others who attended, and they're going to be coming forward with a number of recommendations based on that. But it was a great, great program, and there's a lot of great materials online about that. I encourage you guys to take a look at it.
Great. Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. I just wanted to make people aware about a program that we have in Menlo Park that I don't think a lot of people know about, based on my talking to people and telling them about it. But it's called ACT Menlo Park. It's, it's a program you can download on your smartphone, and a lot of people, I think, don't have it yet, but it basically, it's alert, connect, and track. And so if anybody has an issue they'd like to report, you can download this app, and you can take a picture of the issue, and then send the report, and it gets directed to the correct staff person. And I think staff really likes it when we use this as well, because then it is getting directed to the right person, instead of me sending emails with photographs. So I've just been telling people about this, this application, this app that you can download. And then the other issue I wanted to bring up is former council member, Mayor of Palo Alto, Nancy Shepherd contacted me about the Stanford GUP. And I guess Gail Price also and Nancy have drafted this letter that is on the You Join, it's a You Join campaign. And so they're sending this out to councils about the Stanford GUP, and trying to make sure that we're all active as, as, you know, Maritaki, you and I have been on the subcommittee for the GUP. So I haven't signed it yet, but I wanted to, I told, I told Nancy Shepherd that I would bring it up tonight to make everybody aware of it. I think their goal is to have council members read the letter and then decide if they want to sign it. But it's really trying to protect our rights, whatever rights we may have, even though we're in a different county, but trying to make sure that Stanford, you know, whatever they're offering to Palo Alto that they would be offering, I think we have to write a separate letter, actually, and a letter that says that we need to make sure that if there is some sort of development agreement that is negotiated, that Menlo Park needs to be a part of it. Because currently, it's just, it sounds like it's just being advertised, so to speak, as a development agreement for Palo Alto. And I, I wanted to bring this up tonight, because I don't know if, as a subcommittee, Maritaki, you and I need to get together rapidly to look at the letter they've drafted and see if there's something that we could draft if we had permission. I believe the conversation about this is happening on the 16th in Santa Clara. So if there was a will, and if it was allowed, I don't know, Cara, can we talk about that? Or it's not agendized, so I don't know. You know, I told, I told Ms. Shepherd I'd bring it up, but I don't know if we're going to miss the deadline, or...
Yeah, you can't talk about it this evening.
I didn't think so. And so the next time we could talk about it, I would ask that maybe we could, who knows, it could be continued on their agenda. So I would just ask that we could add this to our agenda for our next meeting.
So I was contacted by Ms. Shepherd as well, and I basically said, we have a subcommittee on the GUP. And so I really frankly didn't, because we had a subcommittee on the GUP, they were at the subcommittee on the GUP. I don't, and if I was going to sign something, I could sign it in my individual capacity, but really I was gonna, we had a subcommittee, you guys are a subcommittee, you think you can meet whenever you want.
Yeah, so I would be happy to, I haven't seen the letter, so I would certainly, as a subcommittee, I'd like to take a look at it. The, the question that I will have, Cara, is related to, you know, the fact that the current jurisdictional oversight is the county of Santa Clara, and Supervisor Semidion has been kind enough to include us in that. I just want to kind of figure out, I mean, we can demand to have our own development agreement, I don't know, you know, so the, so just trying to make sure I understand whether we have the authority or not, or, or is this simply a passionate request? Anyway, so I'd like to get your help on that, just to understand that. And if that, if it does make sense, then, then certainly, I think we, we get a letter then brought back at the next meeting. But, but that's sort of the consideration I have in mind, is just trying to make sure. I also am grateful to Supervisor Semidion, because he has been graciously including us in that, but absolutely, I think, let's, let's take a look at that.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's... Well, no, that's what I, because time is of the essence, I wanted to bring it up tonight. And so I would look forward to that being on our next agenda, and you and I can meet to draft something that we could bring. And perhaps, Cara, you can help us do that.
Great, thank you. So I will just, I've had a resident reach out to me related to some challenges that they went through on their severe frustrations, challenges, and relating to the use permit, the use permit process. Alex, I think I mentioned to you, I believe this resident has talked to a couple of council members, and, and so the question is whether there might be a way that we can agendize a study session to talk about, potentially, to start providing ideas with the input of our, you know, planning department, but, but to sort of kick off a process. And the reason why I'm thinking about that is because that would inform, while there is an existing project on the work plan, and in January typically, the next council will decide on a work plan, the current project is really around style guides. And I'm not sure that's what this is being talked about. So that's why I think it might be useful to have a study session that would then be helpful to the next council when they're doing project prioritization in January, that, that perhaps there might be something that's a little more discreet, you know, a little more of a, you know, near-term reform-type step. So anyway, Alex, I mentioned that to you.
Right, and I had mentioned it to Mark Munzer, and I think he's gone home already tonight. I will bring this up again with him tomorrow and talk about what the, what, what we might be bringing forward, and I can talk to you more offline about some specifics, so.
Okay, great. And then just a final thing, I had the, I get mayor duties, the pleasure of being at the, the Chamber of Commerce annual Golden Acorn Awards over at the Hotel Nia. Really enjoyed it, being able to, to provide the awards to recognizing a couple of great nonprofits, like All Students Matter, Peninsula Volunteers for Their Meals and Wheels Program, Menlo Ballet, and, and recognizing our city attorney, Bill McClure, for his contribution to the, to the city. So I definitely very much enjoyed that and, and happy to be a part of it. And then a final thing, State of the City Thursday night, 6 o'clock at the, at the Park James. Invite everyone to attend and, and look forward to that. And then our next council meeting will, I guess, oh, sorry, Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. I was just going to put out for the record, I forgot to mention that LGBTO caucus also produced, we did a publication on LGBTO and transgender law with regard to schools and with regard to businesses, laws and best practices. And I gave those publications to Fran Dean for the Chamber of Commerce to have available to the businesses and, and making them available to the school boards. So if any businesses are interested in seeing that publication as a reference, it's available through the Chamber of Commerce.
Great. So I will adjourn, and our next meeting is October 23rd, our next regular meeting is October 23rd. Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.